All right, good evening. The time being 7:01. All members of the planning board being present, call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda, Agenda Item A. Excuse me, approval of minutes from March 27, 2023.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the planning board minutes from the meeting on March 27, 2023.
All right, motion made in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Moving on to Agenda Item B, Committee Reports, Administrative Actions. Item one, Committee Reports. Any Committee Reports from any of the members at this time?
Nothing here.
Seeing none, move on to B two, which is Town Planner's Report. Ms. Lauder?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Keep it brief tonight, considering the last week was town meeting and that was busy enough for all of us. Last meeting, I noted that the housing production plan would be on the agenda for this meeting, but due to some, having to work through a few extra action items and strategies with NIMCOG, that's being pushed off until June 12. On the horizon for the May 22 meeting, we will be hearing two new retail marijuana establishment site plan review applications for 913 East Street and 1695 Shawshene Street. Now, you'll remember that 1695 Shawshene Street is also a part of the 1699 Shawshene application as a parking lot only. This new application is for it to be a standalone establishment with all onsite parking and amenities for 1695 itself. And just a note to folks who may have missed it, annual town meeting was last week and the proposed bylaw changes put forth by this board were approved on Wednesday evening of May 3, and they take effect immediately pending final approval from the Attorney General's office, but any permits issued before that approval is officially received will be deemed at risk, like we did with other approvals. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Yes.
So Alex, are these the last two applicants for retail marijuana? I thought that date had...
So the Select Board, excuse me, the Select Board set a final cutoff date of submitting all applications to be this Thursday, May 11, and my understanding is there are two more that are expected to come in, which would go on our June 12 agenda.
Okay, so as long as they're in by May 11 to your offices an application, then they're good to go.
Correct.
So that's the cutoff date.
That's my understanding, yes.
I knew that was a date, but I wasn't sure if it had to be heard by us before that.
No, so that was my understanding, is the Select Board made the judgment that they would like all applications to be heard to be in this building by Thursday, May 11, and that coincides with our June 12 planning board meeting deadline date.
Okay. So with the May 11 date in place, they have to do the two weeks of notifications in the town.
And the law notifications, all that good stuff.
So that allows them to get their first date June 12.
Correct.
Okay, great. Just for clarity, thank you very much.
All right, moving on. Okay, so that, item three is a push off, so.
Correct.
Okay.
I forgot to take it off.
That's fine. All right. All right, now, just for anyone in the audience, Agenda Item D, if you're here for 1699 Shawshene Street, the applicant is requested to be continued to our next meeting. So if you're here for that, you won't miss anything, we're just going to continue it. So you don't need to hang around if you don't want to. All right, with that being said, we'll move on to Agenda Item C, which is to Radcliffe Road. This is continued from our 424 meeting. Ms. Lauder, is everybody okay for this one or not?
No, Mr. LaZott will not be voting on this one.
I couldn't remember how many we had, okay.
No, so he is not voting on Agenda Item C or E.
Okay, very good, thank you. I think the lady in the back, Stevens, just came in. She's here for 1699. So I'll say it just once more, in case anyone who just came in, 1699 Shawshene Street will be continued. Nothing will be heard on that this evening, so if you're here for that, you do not need to stay around.
Ma'am, is that you? Are you here for 1699 Shawshene?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so I thought you were familiar from last meeting, so that's why we made another announcement, just so you know. Thank you.
All right, once you're settled, if you just give your names for the record, the floor is yours. If you want to maybe, I don't know, you can't because you've got the laptop, but if you want to just push the mic down a little bit, just to make sure it picks you up, there you go.
I can do this.
Perfect, thank you.
I have provided a copy of the slide deck in those folders. If you'd like me to get started, I'm happy to, or we can wait till the screen is up and running.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Michael Shelter, project manager from Eco-G Energy.
James Albert, Director of Engineering.
Derek Klein, Site Account Manager.
So again, thank you for meeting with us back in end of March 2023 to discuss the site plan review and special permit application for to Radcliffe Road. We are proposing a 933 kilowatt AC solar canopy and a 1300 kilowatt hour battery energy storage system. So in response to the March 22 meeting, we have provided some updates to our plan set, provided battery safety specifications, information around tree removal and replanting, renderings, and we've incorporated the community and economic development planner recommendations, as well as a few requests that we have to the board as well. So on to the fourth slide, just a quick little refresh of the existing conditions of to Radcliffe Road. So I'm on the phone with Jason, he said we have to use a projector, this is not connected. So, sorry, I have...
Do you have the connection for this?
That I do not.
Well, best that we have a hard copy.
Yes. The next slide is just the review of the property lines. The next slide is the revised plan set cover page, and that shows the dimensional requirements table that was requested by the planner. And I will give you all in a second to get on to the correct page. It's the sixth page of the packet.
What page?
The sixth. The page after that is just a refresh of the site plan and what it would look like with the nine canopies around the western and northern edge of the property, and then in the rear side of the property in the northwest corner behind the building, you can see where the battery will be installed. The page...
I'm not sure what page you're on there.
Okay, sorry, the seventh page. So that's our proposed site plan. The page after that shows a little more zoomed in on the battery energy storage system, as well as the second circle on the left side, where there's those, you can see five black dots, are the proposed utility poles that will be installed. The next slide is showing the array layout, listing the aisle width dimensions as requested from the planner. The next page is a view of canopies one to three from Radcliffe Road, which shows the aisle way, the leading edge height, the...
Trailing edge height.
The trailing edge height, the width of the actual canopies, and we've also had indicated where the end of the parking stripes are underneath the canopies to account for that aisle way. Similarly, on the next page, you see for canopies four to nine from standing in the parking lot, same concept as the page before with the aisle ways, parking striping, width of the canopies, trailing and leading edge heights. The next is just a review of that maneuverability report that we had shown, to show that there will be access to all areas of the parking lot. And if we are ready to move on, we have prepared some information around battery safety. We know that was a big concern at our last meeting regarding fire safety, thermal runoff, and fire suppression. So the information provided here is directly, mostly directly from the Tesla manufacturer's own spec sheet, and I provided that in the documents as an attachment. So one of the biggest concerns was around a battery fire, and if there was any specialized training or equipment needed, should the battery catch fire? And the answer is that, whatever the town of Tewksbury's best practices are for battery fires are the same exact ones that will be applied to this battery system. It's, they built the battery system that it will safely and in a controlled manner burn itself out essentially without exploding or causing any other sort of projectiles to come out of it. So what the way they built it is that it will just burn out.
Okay, can I stop you there for a second?
Yeah.
So, you know, this fire suppression system, we're talking about safety. I know you haven't talked to the fire department at all in town since the IDR meeting way back in March. Can you ask me, can you tell me why? I mean, we are here as a planning board, we rely on the fire department to do exactly what you're saying as far as battery safety and safety protection and all that stuff, but you haven't talked to the fire department in Tewksbury to get there okay and to run anything by them. They're the experts in that, in this field, as far as we're concerned. We rely on them for all of the documentation for that, for that purpose, what you're talking about right now, safety and all that. So, so just my question is, and I talked to them today, I said, "I don't see anything in my documentation about you guys okay in this procedure and what you're talking about." So, so before you go on your father, I may ask you that question, why haven't you went over that, this process with them?
I apologize. I had misunderstood that we would seek clarification from them after planning board approval, so I apologize for that. I will make it a note to immediately reach out to them.
Yeah, because they have no idea what's going on up there.
Okay.
I mean, we're not fire department specialists and all that, so we rely on them for their expertise before anything can be approved to this, at this, at this site, because they have to be the okay to present and protect the residents of Tewksbury as far as, as far as safety and, and for the safety of the firefighters as well, what they're facing when they come into a potential site like this, you know? So I've seen all your documentation from Tesla, but, in New York City, but, you know, until we get that from them, I mean...
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add a comment, the fire department budget for New York City is 2.2 billion, so what may be standard equipment for them may not be standard for Tewksbury. So just to keep that in mind, I would not suggest comparing our firefighting methods, apparatus, or available resources to what's available in New York City.
I apologize, and I would like to clarify that the quote saying that standard fire suppression methods would work that are used by local jurisdictions came directly from Tesla. I just added in, the, we had, Eco-G had added in the New York City to show that their regulations, they have strict regulations around what they will and will not allow. So that was just for additional context, so I apologize for that miscommunication.
It's okay. And again, I'm just making a point, it's not a, it's certainly not a criticism by any stretch, just I thought I would, you know, we're Tewksbury, so, I mean, we have, our hair gets up when somebody compares us to Andover, so if you start comparing us to New York City, things could get a little heated.
I understand.
So that's all, but anyway, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Yes, ma'am, I'm all set, just want to make that point of clarification.
Okay. Thank you again. So moving on, we want to go into the tree removal and replanting information, so we have updated to show that we will, we are proposing the removal of 11 trees. And on the following page, after looking through the Tewksbury zoning bylaws, we noticed that within the planting area requirements, that there is the potential to be allowed to plant native shrubbery instead of trees, if the planning board deems that appropriate. And we would like to request that as, since it is a parking lot with a lot of, with a lack of sufficient access to permeable area, we would work with local landscape architects to identify the proper spots throughout the parking lot that this sort of shrubbery could be planted. And as another alternative, we would be more than happy, Eco-G would be more than happy to provide a donation to a local tree fund of the planning board's choice to help offset those trees that would be removed.
Okay, good. Let's keep going, because we'll get to the questions after.
Yep. So moving on, we have the recommendations and conditions and comments from the planner. So for the list of recommended conditions, I can read through each of these if you'd like, or just the ones that...
If you, if you're complying with what was requested, then we don't need to run through them individually.
Okay. So that's page one, page two, and we have provided sample of the emergency management plan and the decommissioning bond we had used for another project. That's all within the documents that have been provided. So moving on, we're on to the comments, and we, again, I will not read through all of those if you do not like, if you really do not like me to, if you have any questions, I'm happy to stop at any of them, but we have provided updates based on the planner's comments.
Ms. Lauder, you're all set with this?
Excuse me, full transparency, Mr. Chairman, I received them at 3:40 this afternoon, and I didn't have a chance to go through them thoroughly. It does appear that a lot of the comments have been addressed, but I would rather be able to go through them before I say that with confidence.
Okay. Well, judging by the conversation earlier about the fire department, we won't be finished tonight anyway, so you'll have an opportunity, Ms. Lauder can look through these, but provided you've, you know, culminated all the things she asked for, then that should be fine.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on from that, we're now on the 25th page.
Let me just pipe in on the, on the, on your trees, are you suggesting that you want to just eliminate the trees and do something in lieu of?
We are open to what the planning board prefers. We want to comply with the bylaws, so we just wanted to request that we could do the native shrubbery if the board deemed that appropriate, just because of the lack of space to plant new trees on the property. The shrubbery would be a simpler alternative that we could then work with the landscape architect on to determine the best type of native shrubbery and where exactly within the lot that it could be installed.
And if I may, Alex, what's your thoughts on that?
That is ultimately you folks' discretion. I think that if there is a demonstrated difficulty in planting native trees with, given the existing paving areas, utilities, and what have you, I think native shrubbery could be an acceptable alternative, but that'll be up to you folks.
Thank you. So we're on the slide that starts with Eco-G requests to the planning board.
Yep.
Okay.
Now I will just let everyone get... Chairman Duffy, do you, I think he's getting ready to...
You're all set? Is this one? Okay, that's...
Okay.
Further in the...
Okay, so we'll just...
Got you, thank you.
So Eco-G has a few conditions of approval that we would like to request on this project, and we do understand that we will not be authorized to submit for a building permit until all of these conditions have been satisfied and work is complete by the board. They include our wind load calculations, lighting and glare plan, proof of insurance, and the landscaping and planting plan. The first three are all dependent upon final contractor that we source for constructing, the final racking and modules that we select, and the lighting goes in tandem with that. And for the landscaping and planting, planting plan, we would like the board's tree removal offset decision before we go forward with developing a full landscaping plan, so we can plan accordingly on if it's going to be native shrubbery and what sort we need to work out with that. And we do have examples of what wind load calculations and structural surveys could look like. We have a sample lighting plan that we had provided, a sample proof of insurance, and also a sample landscaping and planting, planting plan from some of our other projects. And if you have any specific questions, James Albert, our Director of Engineering, is here and he'd be happy to answer some of those for you.
So one comment I can make with regards to is a concern brought up regarding either wind loading or modules potentially coming free. So the entire system is going to be designed to ANSI 716 and all of those standards that are associated with that. Typically, that will translate to uplift force of between 30 to 50 pounds applied to the modules, and the modules are designed to withstand this. So with that, the basic wind speed, I guess a good way to correlate that is the basic wind speed would be 121 miles per hour would be the design wind speed before you would even start to encroach on a potential failure. So if you ever have seen module failure, that would be attributed to what's called a top mount clamp, which we don't utilize in our design. All of our modules have a through bolt design, which is four bolts, so you would need multiple points of failure, and quite honestly, the module frame would most likely fail before you would have any sheer force that would break the bolts. So from that perspective, there's nothing I can tell you specifically right now until we finish the design, but I can tell you that that's the standard we're going to design to, and that unless a tornado literally ran right over the canopy, you're not going to see the wind speeds needed to actually create that type of failure. The other topic was lighting.
Correct.
Yes. So another concern that was brought up was glare or light pollution outside of the property, if I understand that. So again, we have not chosen the specific fixtures at this point, however, Eco-G is happy to utilize downward facing fixtures as opposed to edge lighting fixtures, if that meets this, helps to mitigate the issues. One thing I will say is that the configuration of the arrays, the leading edge or the lower edge on all of the rays is on the outside of the property, so when the lighting fixtures are installed underneath the canopies, just by the virtue of them being tilted in that manner, they have an automatic awning effect that would mitigate the light propagation horizontally, combined with the fact that we're happy to choose any lighting fixture that is suitable, that would help mitigate that issue.
Start with Mr. Fattile.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I had a couple of questions, and one was underneath the canopies, the cement pillars that are there that are holding the canopies down?
Yes.
That's for holding the canopy down, correct?
Correct, that's to actually absorb all the loads, both uplift, lateral, anchor the canopies, so yes.
So the pictures you showed show vehicles like cars or SUVs, but what if there was a truck that has a higher frontage of it, possibly hitting a canopy or something? Usually those are there for two reasons, right? To hold the canopy down and for protection so it don't hit the canopy structure, is that correct?
So, so actually, the canopies can be configured in such a way where the foundations are actually at grade, and the steel beam can start at that point. We choose to not do that, we choose to have the elevation above grade to add that extra safety factor in there, that if there is a vehicle strike, that it's not on the beam directly, that it's on the, the foundation.
Right. So my question to you is, could they be higher to facilitate possibly a truck hitting it rather than a car, being a higher, higher frame?
Yes, we can, we can absolutely make the foundations taller. We can make that part of the process. Obviously, there are some limitations there.
Yep.
I would say historically, we've had foundations as tall as six feet, not that we would necessarily want to go in that direction, but certainly going one foot high, our standard above grade is typically three feet. We could go to four feet, or we could go to taller.
Reason why I brought this issue up is having been at transfer stations where there's a lot of tractors and trailers and so forth coming in dumping trash and so forth, they designed them so that they get wide enough and high enough so the trucks, if they do hit them or backhoes hit them, they're not going to take down the structures because they're cement enclosed.
Right.
Structure, similar to this.
Yeah, well, obviously, I mean, this is in a parking lot, so we would expect to see non-commercial traffic there, so that would be the fundamental basis for this design, but yes, that is an option if that's a...
I'm just thinking of somebody using a, using a truck to come in and out of the regular mode of transportation back and forth to work, and they hit one, and they happen to hit, hit the cement, which is lower than the top of the truck, that's all, that was just one of my concerns, but, and the other one I had was the lighting you mentioned, I mean, usually we have the lightings with the, with the packs on top so they don't protrude out to the surrounding community, so.
So, yeah, this is...
With the hood on it, right?
Yeah, correct. We can have it downward, you know, a lot of garage lighting, design for garages can be edge lit. We can work with a fixture that's a downward focal point, for sure, but as I mentioned, because of the seven degree tilt, and we typically put the lighting either centered or somewhat more centered, that it's not going to end up being able to propagate out directly. But yes, happy to put on a downward...
Just my last question I have, readings through some of the information, which, you know, giving us this packet tonight really isn't fair to any of the board members not being able to review it. If it came into the office a quarter or four today, I just got this at 7 o'clock tonight to review, I mean, it's not really fair to us to even comment on it, but we're looking at it somewhat tonight for you. So, but having read through some of the other information, decommissioning of a site like this, I see some of the, one site was this $16,000 that was put somewhere for something, anybody else read up on that? If you had to decommission the site for some reason or...
Well, I think in your, Mr. Fattile, if I might, I think in Alex's comments, it was going to be a surety to put decommissioning.
And we, we understand that that's based off of a price that's determined, that would be determined after we have a professional engineer calculate the total cost that it would be to decommission, and then we understand that it would be through the town of Tewksbury.
Yeah, I just didn't know if that was a standard figure for you guys to, is this your first attempt at this?
No, it's, we've done decommissioning bonds on other projects, and we, it's very similar, that it's an allocated portion of what it would be for the cost of decommissioning that's normally determined by the board.
Okay. Is that a similar figure to other sites you've done or put away at? I mean, is that bonds?
I can get back to you on...
Okay, just curious.
The various projects.
I sure don't want to be holding a $20,000 surety bond, and all of a sudden it costs us $40,000 to decommission the site, so.
No, it totally makes sense, thank you.
Okay. But that, I'm all set with Chairman for now.
Mr. Duffy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So a couple of quick, quick comments on the, on the tree issue. I think that we would be willing to take a look at that, but we want, I would prefer to have you present us, option one, two, three, four, not have us try to invent a, some kind of a substitute for you. Okay, so I'd prefer to have you guys come in here. All of this being said, and I don't want to get up, get caught up in the weeds of the, all the technical here, I am definitely in favor of this type of project. I think that, I think the solar array is a, is a great idea. It provides some shade for the parking, reduces the heat island effect, and it has a lot of positive benefits. So I'm just... So, I'm just curious from what stuff that I read these days, the... Where is the mega pack? What is your timeline on this project? Roughly?
Timeline as in how long will the project last?
Construction.
Construction?
Yeah.
I can...
Are you looking for the duration of the...
When would you like to start and when would... How long would it take from that point?
Michael will take a look. Part of the issue is obtaining the battery at this point?
Well, that was gonna be my next question. So, where is that mega pack manufactured right now? Because from what I see, Tesla is gonna be manufacturing those in Shanghai. And are they manufacturing them in China now? Because my understanding is that there's a real logjam, a backlog of switchgear equipment and so forth for these electrical projects. And I'm sure Mr. Chairman could probably comment on that in more detail, but I just don't want to see a project crawling along here that's gonna take forever.
Right. And we're seeing timelines on switchgear across the board as an issue. With regards to the Tesla mega pack, yes, we could be looking at forty weeks, fifty weeks, thirty to fifty weeks, depending.
Lead time, and that fifty weeks could turn into a hundred weeks.
Well, I wanna say that we haven't seen that. I'll say that typically, the, you know, the thirty to fifty weeks, you know, we've seen a little bit of slippage, but not double.
Where are they coming from now, the mega packs? Where are they being manufactured? Any idea?
I don't know.
If you don't know this, okay, I was just curious.
But yeah, we are looking at particularly long lead times. It would be similar to transformers. We've seen forty to fifty lead times on transformers too sometimes, so...
Okay. Okay, so I would like to see some renderings of the proposed substitutions for the trees.
Okay.
I think that would be helpful for us, for me particularly as a visual, and then we can... That would help us make a decision on that.
So, I think, if I'm not mistaken, I think the first question they asked is, are we okay with that? If we are, then they can create one? So, we get... Once we get around and we... That sounds like we're all on board with that? Then yeah, I think then you guys could put something together. But I think that was their first question, was are we okay with that as opposed to the tree money? Which, have we done that? I've never done that I can remember.
I think we've done that on other...
No, which is possible, and maybe that's something somewhere down the road we do, but I just don't remember ever doing, you know, a tree fund. That was all.
I mean, for context, I think we're only looking at removing eleven trees.
Yeah. Okay. So, that's... So, once we get around, once everybody's on board with that, then, you know, you guys could bring...
But I mean, eleven trees on the site is better than no trees. You know what I mean? We don't want to create this barren tarmac out there either, you know? And I think for the benefit of the town, I think it would be good to have some greenscape there. And then, just because we recently ran into this, if you have some underground infrastructure there, then you need to... That needs to coordinate with your landscape plan to make sure that there aren't any issues there.
For example, I don't want to see that.
Okay, yep.
You know what I mean? Like, that looks awful. So, that shouldn't be... We shouldn't have to even comment. Like, that should not look like that on this version. All right? So...
Okay. That was great.
And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say that I also... The reason we like shade trees is, again, oxygen, reduce heat island effect, all of that. I think you're providing quite a bit of shade, so some other plantings and whatnot, which, again, to piggyback on what our chairman just pointed out, I would want whatever those plantings to be, I'm not sure if any irrigation or anything like that would be available on site already, but I would want them to be maintained or replaced as needed for the life of this installation. Because I have no idea how much sunlight anything's gonna get. What if the landscape architect, you know, sort of, you know, didn't do... Or didn't quite pick the most appropriate trees, or maybe missed on one or two of them on his shrubberies or plantings, and so they didn't survive? You know, to us, it would not be a one-shot deal. We still want to see what we are approving for here in good faith. So, that would be something. A few other questions I have would be... So, how often would maintenance be performed, and would copies of that maintenance record be submitted to the town upon completion? Whether it's six months annually, you know, going in... I know it's mostly just tightening all the bolts, verifying that the batteries are fine, things like that. Probably infrared testing on your switchgear, things of that nature?
Typically, that would be done on an annual basis.
Okay. And is that... Ms. Louder, is that something that typically happens when they do maintenance reports? Is that recorded somehow?
We'll just ask for it. We'll just ask...
Yeah, that will probably be something we'll want to ask for, only because there aren't any other large-scale solar arrays except for one that is on town-owned property. So, we do have those reports. This would be the first commercial one that we've seen.
Add it to the conditions that they...
Yeah.
I mean, you may do some of the other parts, not annually, but just to be easy.
You want a copy of the maintenance report on the battery? Yeah, that's fine.
Including whatever you've done since the last one. And then, that way, we keep it on file.
Sure, we're happy to provide that.
So, that'll get added to the conditions.
Because I agree with your assessment that it would take a tornado-force wind to shear a panel off. However, constant winds, and for some reason, take it from a golfer in April, May, and June, it seems to be windy all the time now. So, and that creates vibration, which loosens the hardware, and then over time, if it's not addressed, you know, those things can become loose enough that you don't need a tornado to take a panel off.
Yeah, understood.
And I say that with a little bit of firsthand experience at having had to deal with that type of an issue. Talking about the batteries, I mean, I know we talked a little bit about it already. Is there... The batteries are considered hazardous chemicals, and so I wanted to know if an installation, transportation, hazardous material plan will be provided as part of the construction for this?
We are happy to prepare one and have it sent over. We'll provide a draft for...
Okay. However, it's gonna be rigged, any personnel involved, any training, PPE measures, anything like that, just in case something, heaven forbid, a crib or something or a strap can slip, it can hit land, and now you've got issues. And from what I read of the Tesla pack, when this goes into a fire, the slow burn, it vents gases out of the top. So, obviously, if something were to happen, and it happened in such a way that someone was in the line of fire with those vents, we could have a very serious situation. The other question I had about that is if there was a fire, if the... When those gases vent, where do they go? We are near some wetlands here. If that gets into the air, does it affect local, you know, plant and animal life somehow if that were to happen? What would be the spread? How far could it dissipate? Things like that. I'd be interested to know if Tesla has information on that.
Yeah, happy to reach out to them for sure. Thank you.
And again, just since you're gonna have to come back, if you can try to obtain that type of information, I'd find that very helpful. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, gentlemen.
So, just to poll everybody, everybody's okay? Yes, sorry. Everybody's okay with doing the shrubbery as an alternative to, since the trees are coming up, something green do away? Is that fine? Is everyone...
Yes.
Brooke? Jonathan, you have a...
Yes.
So, if you... When you come back, if you could have something showing where, you know, the plan is to do that. You know, obviously, you're using trees, so it's not really a one-for-one. So, if you find places you can put the green, you know, the shrubbery and whatnot in more place, please do so, because we're trying to offset what's coming out. And obviously, you know, we're kind of gonna see of sales in here now. So, anything that can sort of add to the greenery around the site is preferable, just, you know... I mean, I know not everybody can kind of see in there, but it's just... It's just, you know, we kind of do it with everybody regardless, when you can see it from the street kind of thing. Did you have something to say?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also wanted to add, just so these folks aren't going back and forth again, whether you folks are okay with the wind load calculations and the lighting and glare plan being part of the conditions of the special permit to be submitted prior to the issuance of building permit based on the conditions that they put forth?
I'm fine with it because, I mean, in that you're setting yourselves up to either get it done or not. If you don't submit the stuff, you're never getting the permit. So, I'm fine with that. It's up to you guys. I mean, obviously, you have... Those are some things you may not have right now. I mean, it's not necessarily... It's not one of the things we necessarily need to hold you up on, but obviously, you understand that, you know, you're gonna have to submit those so they can be checked, or you're gonna be a limbo, you know, forever. And once you leave us, you know, whoever you're dealing with, you're dealing with. There's no coming back, you know, for us to solve that issue. So, but if you guys are fine with it, we're fine with it? You know, I mean, that's... Someone will check the numbers, and they check out, then you're good to go. And if they don't, they're gonna ask you to revise them until they're happy, okay? Is there anything else?
No, that was it.
So, you know, Ms. Louder's gonna check over to make sure that you've complied with her, the requests that were in there. As Mr. Fattaya pointed out, we'd really have a chance to make sure that, you know, you did, because we just got this stuff. So, by the next meeting, you know, my suggestion is that we don't have a ninety-slide presentation come in tonight, the night of. That's just not gonna... It's not gonna be something we're gonna be able to process. You know, we're kind of moving to the endpoint here, so, you know, do the things that we need, keep it tight, get those done. You know, we don't have to rehash. We just need those things that we've asked you, those Ts and Is at this point.
Understood. Thank you.
So, with that...
We do have renderings. If you'd like to see them now, we can leave them for you to look at later.
Well, might as well, because I mean, anyone in the audience who cares, they get a chance to see them as well.
Okay.
So, we'll let you...
Sorry. I did have to prepare for the screen. I apologize. I'll bring it better after. Thanks. So, this is a view looking from the west side of the parking lot east, just of understanding what the canopy is looking like. This is looking from Rad Cliff Road, Rad Cliff Road towards the... This is between some of the canopies, and then there's some of the canopies that will run parallel to Rad Cliff Road. And then the last one we had prepared is a rendering of what the battery will look like in the rear of the car. And we are happy to leave these...
Yeah, we'll give those to Ms. Louder. So, let me just ask you a question from those... What... It just made me think, because, you know, obviously, those look really shiny and bright compared to the real photos you sent. So, what is the sort of maintenance of all of these to ma... I mean, are they painted? Is it just steel?
The steel is gonna be galvanized, so it's not gonna be painted. It's gonna be galvanized, so there's gonna be no maintenance required as far as a finished coating to prevent the steel from rusting.
Yep.
And all the hardware is either stainless steel or aluminum. In general, we're gonna avoid, you know, any perish materials because they're gonna rust. So, anything that's gonna be on there is either gonna be hot dip galvanized, stainless steel, or aluminum.
Okay. All right.
Another question, Chairman. Good. So, I have another question for you before we finish up. So, you have not touched base with the building department at all in town, right?
Not yet, correct.
Okay. That happens... That should happen pretty soon, correct?
The building department was a part of the IDR meeting as well, and they didn't have any initial questions until the building permit submittal comes in, so...
Yeah, okay. All right. Because in my conversation today with the fire department, the building inspector and fire captain who's in charge of fire prevention had a discussion about this, coming in saying, "We haven't got any updates and haven't seen anything since the IDR." So, so he's in the dark as well. So, if we can keep... We can get them on board as far as what's happening, so they can be ready for the future, so...
Absolutely. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Mr. Duffey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One more question kind of popped into my head on the roof deck area. Approximately, like, how many square feet are we talking roughly? What'd you say?
Talking about the module area for all the canopies?
The entire covered area, basically what you would call, say, a roof. And where I'm going with that is I'm curious where the runoff goes for all of that. And I know that that's not really our purview with sort of engineering, but I'm just wondering if there could be a... Another use for that water, for that runoff, stormwater runoff, in the form of irrigation or something along those lines? Just something for you guys to maybe think about and see if that's something that's feasible? And...
I'm not... So, with that, snow management, water management is typically something that we include on the canopies. With that, that typically brings the rainwater back to the foundations and then down to the center to stop sheets coming off. With regards to utilizing that water, the volume of water would not make it practical to have containers above ground, so you'd really have to do civil work and do it underground.
No, that's what I would think, that it would be some type of a fifty-thousand-gallon cistern or something along those lines, you know? But I'm just wondering if that was ever a consideration on any part of the design? And if not, you know, and I know that this will be engineering taking a look at this, you know, we just would obviously have concern about the quantity and the quality of the stormwater runoff in the area.
I mean, I can't say that, no, those were not conversations that were had. Typically, the conversations are about water management off the arrays. Obviously, that would be a very large civil undertaking to put that large a cistern, you know, underneath.
Okay. Just food for thought.
And as for the full size, I will have that in the next update for you. I had it written down, and it seems to have disappeared.
No problem. Thank you.
All right. With that, I'll open it up to the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this? Once, twice? All right. All right, so since there's a few things left, then I suspect we are going to continue this. I have seven fifteen on the twenty-second. So, do I have a motion to continue to...
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to continue to the twenty-second at seven fifteen.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right, we'll see you back.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
No more paperwork, okay?
Okay.
We're sending the energy services.
Moving on to agenda item D, which, as mentioned earlier, the applicant has requested to be continued to our May twenty-second meeting. We have that penciled in for seven PM. So, do I have a motion to continue?
So moved.
I have a motion to continue to seven PM. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. That brings us to agenda item E, One Main Street Site Plan Review, continuing from Gentlemen, once you get settled, if you just give your names to the record, the floor Somebody's using a good paper here. What's going on?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, David Plunkett, a representative applicant. With me at the table tonight is Matt Hammer from Landplex LLC and Ken Cram from Bayside Engineering. We also have in the audience, in the event there are any questions that might be able to be answered by them, Jesse Mulberg from Cavendish Architectural Collaborative, and representatives from Harvest Mounds, who'll be in charge of the site. Mr. Chairman, there's been significant back and forth between, you know, the engineer, back and forth between, you know, the engineer, the traffic engineer, and consulting engineers in the town. And I believe that, you know, pretty much all the issues have been addressed. Uh, the only issue that I believe is open in one sense is the, uh, any issue pertaining to final approval by Mass Highway, uh, which obviously is not gonna be within the jurisdiction of the board, or would we, we wouldn't be able to address final completion of that uh, until the submittal, uh, to Mass Highway and approval, which certainly is more than acceptable as a, uh, condition of approval by the board, that we have to go through that process and get the appropriate approvals by them. I think maybe the best way to handle this at this time is that I'll first, uh, calling Mr. Hammer to address any of the changes that have occurred since our last, uh, meeting, and then I'll ask Mr. Cram to address, you know, the issues relative to, uh, his interaction with the consultant engineer and the, uh, traffic analysis.
Uh, good evening, uh, for the record, Matt Hammer with Landplex Engineering, uh, ten George Street, whole of Mass. Since our first meeting with you folks, um, uh, we haven't been before you since then, so we've had a few planned changes, uh, since that first meeting. And I'll go over all the planned changes from that first meeting that you have been presented with, uh, as of, as of now. So one of the, um, there were two major things at the meeting, one was, um, a recommendation to, to bring the vehicles completely around the building in a one-way fashion. And we have now done that. Bringing us to this parking area out front. And then exiting out here, so that was the one primary change that the board requested of us. The second one was to relocate the bike storage area, and relocate that in the rear. So we have also done that, and with that, we've provided some protection bollards around that bike area, which is here. So we have two bike racks here with protective bollards. With that change of the bike racks in the rear also triggered some additional work pertaining to the access to that area. That would happen along the side here, and originally we had a line striped area on the pavement to demarcate that pedestrian access from the, alongside the building, which was primarily to bring these folks that were parking back here to a protected, um, or a designated area that was line striped, so now that's a, a sidewalk, a walkway. Additionally, with that, there was a recommendation from the traffic engineer that's also been reviewing the project. And there was a recommendation to also put a walkway on the side of the building, which we've done as well. There was a, a comment from the traffic engineer to ensure that the swinging of the gates was not gonna interfere with the vehicles coming in to the rear of the building, which we also provided an analysis for that, as well as a, um, turning radius, um, exhibit plan that showed how a van would enter this loading area here, and be able to navigate that without, um, any problem, so we provided that. Additionally, they requested, I'm talking about the traffic engineering, uh, peer review, to also line stripe this area over here, to demarcate that. And additionally, to provide some line striping from the sidewalk area, which we aligned the, um, loading and unloading area for the handicap space, to have a cross hatching crosswalk to bring you out to the existing sidewalk. With that, um, pedestrian crosswalk, we'll call it, uh, we also, um, removed one parking space due to that comment, which was located here. With that change, we also were able to now form a concrete area here to encapsulate the signage, so that it wouldn't potentially be hit by a plow or somebody driving, which was also a recommendation from the peer review traffic engineer, so that's been added. We added some wheel stops here in the parking areas. And we conducted some additional turning radius, uh, exhibit plans that showed how a, um, refuse garbage truck could navigate their way around the site. Also to access the proposed area where there'll be a, a small dumpster, there's not a, expected to have a tremendous amount of, um, trash from this facility. And also, to provide some additional turning radius related to the fire truck, which we had already provided to the uh, town engineer and the fire department, and we had already received comments back from them, back when we made our original submission. Additionally, there's a stop line here. There's signage to, um, to instruct everyone where they cannot, and where they can go with their vehicle, which we provided that on the, on the plans. And we also provided a, a signed summary for all those signs. And then the most recent comment we had received from the, um, the town engineer at, um, Attorney Plunkett had indicated, had to do with what would be needed to be done in terms of repairing or closing off the curb cut out in front of the site, which we would do, uh, through a completely separate filing to Mass DOT with a, with a, uh, street access permit application for those proposed improvements out here, and how they correlate into, um, Mass DOT's, um, existing they've, have proposed out in this, out in this area of the site already. So that was acknowledged, uh, we fully understand that, and there's gonna be very little work out here, it's essentially just reconstructing, uh, curbing and replacing it with, um, concrete sidewalk. And those changes to the plan.
Alright, thank you. Anybody else, Mr. Plunkett?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I suggest that if there are any questions specific to Mr. Hammer's presentation, maybe it might be appropriate just to do that.
Okay.
Then I'll ask Mr. Cram to go through his, uh, review of what has happened with the TEC, uh, the consultant engineer to his traffic report.
Mr. Chair.
Just one question pertaining to the site plan you have there, which is the, um, the notes that I see, the comments that I see from town engineering is that the turning radius as they're exiting, they're still gonna be crossing the center line of the, uh, of the roadway, mainstream. I wanted to know if that comment remains, or has that been addressed with your updated plan?
We, we provided an updated plan from having received that comment, uh, which shows that we will not be crossing that line, that double line. Um, and I have that plan with me, if you care to look at it, I could provide that to you, I know you don't-
Is that reset, Dr. Just?
This was, uh, prepared on Thursday of last week, and I was gonna bring copies down, uh, just cause we got the comment on Thursday, we made the change on Thursday, and then, and then it just turned out that, um, it was recommended that I just bring the plans with me, uh, this evening.
Excuse me, it was actually Friday, not Thursday.
Oh, I'm sorry, well, the plan was made on Thursday, and I was gonna bring them down on Friday, yeah, so, um-
Okay, so you have addressed that comment, and it's resolved?
Uh, I believe it's resolved.
Okay.
It's, we have comments coming, um, you know, um, originally from the, the, um, the fire department, which we had back in March, we had provided a response back to the fire chief back at that time. Uh, we then, uh, received a comment from, uh, TEC, the, the, the peer review traffic engineer, we provided them with turning radius analysis as well. And then, um, we also had a, a comment from the town engineer for the same type of comment. And it's a matter of whether the, the overhead from the tire would extend into this line here, on the, on the, on the, the middle of the roadway. And, um, we have provided an analysis that shows that it doesn't, um, but I also would mind everyone when a fire truck's leaving. They can put on their lights, whatever they would need to do to exit, in terms of making sure that nobody is in the way of the fire truck, depending on what their maneuverability is at the time. But, um, so that, I don't know if that answers your question, Mr. Kampa.
Yeah, I thought we were doing pretty good till you came up on the part about the lights, because if they're turning out and someone's speeding the other way, they might not realize that they're gonna swing out, so I'd really like the comment to be addressed, um, in the spirit in which it's intended, which is that, that our fire, firefighters can turn their truck out without having to worry about oncoming traffic.
Well, this is a an analysis of a fire truck, uh, not crossing over the line.
Um, Mr. Chairman, if we might just to have it part of the record-
Sure.
-give some multiple copies just to be, uh, in view, again, to address the question, this does show the ability to conform to the request of the fire department, to show the ability to make that turn.
Do you have anything else?
No, I mean, if the fire department's gonna be satisfied with this, then I, I'd say I'd make, just make that a condition of our approval tonight.
I mean, they're gonna talk to you, but it's getting settled up out in the field anyways. Make sure everything's all set.
But my mind is that we showed-
Just ask one question, the in and out here, this, this isn't changing from what's there now.
It is not.
So, I mean, if nothing new happened, that's exactly how the vehicles are coming in and out now.
That's correct. And I also would mind the, the board, that we also are at an established intersection with lighting, uh, signalization at this intersection, so it's, um, at least it is monitored that way, I know the fire department has devices where they can, uh, uh, hit the signalization if they feel as though they need additional measures in order to navigate themselves back out into the roadway.
Right, but I think you're getting off topic with that, because if you've got the, the sweep analysis that's saying it makes it-
Yes.
Let's leave it there until someone brings up that it doesn't, in which case you can address it, but what I was just trying to clarify is you haven't caused a new problem with what we're doing here, this is how vehicles come in and out now. That doesn't mean you don't have to deal with the problem, I'm just saying you didn't do something here that was causing the vehicles to come out differently than they did before.
That's correct.
Okay, so you're all set right now?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Duffy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, um, when do you expect to hear back, you know, or to get your permit from Mass DOT?
So we would, um, Mass DOT wants us to receive our approvals here first. Um, so, we would, um, expect, we were just discussing this out in the parking lot, um, we think we could be, uh, through that street access process with Mass DOT by August.
So, I know, and, and I see it in the, in the review here is, uh, that, that, uh, at the prior meeting, we had talked about a right turn only, and we're gonna kinda stick with that program, uh, on exit there. Because, no, you're right, nothing changes, Mr. Chairman, as far as going in and out a lot, except for the number of vehicles. So, that's, that's somewhat of a change, I would say. Uh, you know, the number of vehicles are gonna be going in and out of that, it's, right now, it's a vacant building, if I'm not mistaken, right?
Uh, no, it's a fully operational business.
Oh, is it?
It's a business operation.
What's its function right now?
It's Simon's, uh, it's still Simon's Auto, uh-
Okay.
-Service Station, and I-
Okay.
They used to sell cars, I think that they still might have that activity going on as well.
So, is there any chance that Mass DOT, I mean, can they overrule your right turn only re, re, uh, requirement, or?
I would have, uh, our traffic engineer speak.
Okay, what, what do you typically see on that, I guess would be the question, if-
Well, can we get, let's stick to these, because we are gonna get to traffic in a minute.
Okay.
So we'll use that question then, just to keep everything in its own place.
Yep, okay, that's all I really have on that, then, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fattaya?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So getting back to the plan, Mr. Hammer, right, somebody drives into the, into the, into the lot, and they go left to park, are they able to go left to park at those spots right there?
Not by si- not by signage.
Okay. So they have to go around the building-
That's correct.
-to park in those spots.
That's correct.
What's preventing them from doing that, from going left, just signage on the road? Or on the, on the, on the pavement, is that what it is, or, or the sign? No entry?
Yeah, this do not enter, so they'd be, um, breaking the law.
Okay.
So I, I can't-
In the parking lot, right?
In the parking lot, sure. Yep.
Okay. So somebody coming in, has go all over on the building and all of the park in those spots out front?
That's correct.
Okay, alright. So getting back to the fire department, I know you mentioned everybody else about the fire department, but they haven't approved the auto turn, have they?
They, um, have received, uh, response to their comments, uh, back in, uh, March, and I have not, um, heard back from them.
Thought this was-
And they, excuse me.
Thought that was New Thursday. No?
So the fire department originally had asked us to make a statement that there would be no conflicts with their fire truck apparatus, which we made back to the fire department, and did not hear anything back from them, from that correspondence.
Okay.
Unless, uh-
So we're assuming they're okay with the new design coming up?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to get their approval, but, you know, before we finalize everything, so, just, just so we're all on the same page.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so, but I know you talked about engineering, and you guys redrawing this, but fire department's in and out with their trucks and their drivers, so, that's why I would rather have them okay, everything, just to make sure they're fine with-
I presume that the fire department's been receiving all the correspondence through the planning department, when we submit all of the plans, we've submitted multiple copies of the plans.
I don't know if that happens, but, so, okay, I'm mostly on this here right now, alright.
So, I'll just work backwards, the only thing, and, and this is just because this, this comes up when we do the, the fire stuff, is that, as I understand it, we get comments when they have a problem, otherwise they won't sign off for good until the end in the field, when they can be sure it can be done once everything's done.
Typically, that is the case, they haven't received this particular plan, cause as Mr. Hammer said, we didn't receive it until Friday, and the fire captain who addresses fire prevention issues doesn't work on Friday, he's Monday through Thursday. And the other issue with that is they typically are talking about navigating within a site and not installing permanent grant, uh, vertical granite curbing and things like that, now as far as, um, navigating out of the site and not crossing the double yellow, I don't know, like you said, the only thing they're changing on the site really here is adding that concrete island for the signage, the directional signage, so I don't know if a field verification, like by then it's kinda too late, so, um, I can certainly forward this latest plan to them, and like you said, typically no news is good news with them, but they haven't received this one yet.
Well, it's just, I mean, we can confirm they get it, that, that I, but we don't typically get back, even when we ask sometimes, we don't get an answer back, because the answer's really, we don't know-
Right.
-until we see it in its final, sort of, you know, so that's where we usually get left with that, but we do wanna confirm they got this, even though it was engineering that asked you for it, they have to have it because it's, it's for them, so let's make sure that they did get it, and again, provided they didn't have an issue with it, that's sort of where we are right there.
And I'd like to also add to that, they didn't respond to a, a previous plan, we've done multiple turning radius analysis, so they didn't respond to one about a month ago, either. Um, but you're right, um, Mr. Johnson, they typically would wanna reserve the right until the site's fully constructed, that they're able to navigate their way through the site in order for them to sign off on the-
But the other half of that, the other, the other half of that, I think, is just having from, from petitioners, not you in particular, just petitioners in general, tell us when you've sent those in, that way we know they've received them, and if we haven't heard anything negative back, we at least know they got it, and if they had a problem, we likely would have heard by now, kinda thing, you know what I mean? If we have those dates, okay, they got it on March twenty-first. Well, it's been a while, if they had an issue, we'd suspect we'd have heard by now, we feel okay. This one, Friday, obviously, we're not sure, did they see it, did they not see it, as of now?
I would just add that this particular issue that we're talking about wasn't necessary, wasn't an issue in his original set of comments.
Okay, either way, like I said, I mean, ju- Okay, either way, like I said, I mean, I meant it as a generic thing. More about making sure, because we don't get that final okay from them. We only get, do we have an issue? We only know that they've seen something they might have an issue with. If you tell us, they've received it.
Yeah.
So this one, we know they haven't had a chance to comment on it because they're just getting it now. So as long as we don't get any comment from that, I guess we're fine. Actually, I don't think I don't think I have anything else on these, so we can move on to traffic.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this point, Mr. Cram will address his traffic report and the response with the consulting engineer, Engineering Corporation. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Cram at this time.
Good evening. Ken Cram from Bay Side Engineering. On April, on or about April 18th, we submitted a response to comments letter which addressed TEC's original concern, original peer review comments on the traffic study. And that was April 18th, and their original peer view was, well, this is it actually, yeah, May 3rd was their response to our responses. So and I've had a chance to look at it today. I was out of town last week myself. And I went through it, and most of their comments have are closed. A lot of the things have been addressed. There were a couple of little housekeeping items. One of our updated analyses were done with the previous version of the analysis without some of the little corrections. But we reran that analysis, and that'll be resubmitted. The numbers changed slightly, but still, the overall level of service was C in in the resulting analysis for the signalizing intersection of Clark Road at Main Street. The concern, the comments that they raised of significance in terms of this response relates to the the Mass DOT process, which, you know, once we get a conditional approval, as Matt had indicated, we have all the materials. It's a matter of just compiling the plans and putting them all in the right package and submitting it to Mass DOT. And that process could take four to six weeks on a good day. I would say eight to, Mr. Fattalia is laughing. He's been through this before.
Nothing happens perfect with those guys.
Yeah, nothing is perfect with Mass DOT, unfortunately. So and they had asked, and we had provided a supplemental analysis using trip generation data from the dispensary that's right up the street across the line in Lowell. And we did counts at that location. And it is, of all the dispensaries that I've ever worked with or of all the data I've ever seen, that dispensary is probably the highest in terms of traffic generation I've ever seen. And the the only thing I can think of is because of its location. Right off 495. And they have a left turn out prohibition as well. And, you know, I would expect that once Tewksbury's Board of Selectmen grant the licenses that they're going to grant, and I would suspect that there will be one on Main Street in the general area of 495. Just the nature of business, that will cut into their business. And, you know, eventually, everything will will flatten out to to an extent as more dispensaries come into this general area. So but we did run that, and, you know, we did, we still got comparable levels of service. They had asked also, we had stated that the dispensary would not be open before nine. But the ITE, Institute of Transportation Engineers, in the trip generation manual, some of the the data in that database shows that there is some traffic that's generated during the weekday morning peak hour, probably because they have different hours of operation. So we also ran that analysis for our site. And again, you know, we get good levels of service overall. Keep in mind that that is with a left turn out prohibition at our driveway. So so that was pretty much it on the on the traffic comments. They had asked a number of other comments that Matt Hamer had had helped me address because they were primarily site comments, but a lot of those have been closed as well. The one, the other thing that came up is the the sidewalk in front of the site, where we have a number of curb cuts right now, we're closing up two. And as a result, you know, resetting the curb, resetting the sidewalk, that leaves a short stretch, we figured about 20 feet of sidewalk that, you know, originally was not planning on being touched. But we are minimal to moving forward with replacing that section. So we have, we'll have one contiguous sidewalk that we will do, which will meet up with the work that Mass DOT will do. Not sure of their schedule, I haven't checked recently on that. Last I heard, it was supposed to start this year. But I don't know whether they're going to start at this end or down the other end at Assle and Pike. So so that's pretty much the summary. I think I hit the the highlights. And, you know, if you have questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
We'll start with Mr. Duffy, so you can go take back to your question.
Sure. Yeah, I was just, as I was mentioning, and I and I appreciate that input there. The the right turn lane, like 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 when when the Mass DOT permit gets submitted by you, it will include these comments, I would assume, in this report. And how likely are they to agree with that with that review?
Oh, I think they would totally agree with the right turnout prohibition.
Okay.
They may ask us to do more things that we haven't already thought of. But as as we indicated, anything that, you know, they control the access to Route 38 at Main Street, as you all know, and wherever they say goes. And I believe that, you know, we'll be able to meet their, I won't use the word demands, but their needs in terms of access.
Sure.
And we would.
And ours as well.
And yours as well.
The towns as well.
The left turn prohibition definitely is going to stand. And, you know, once we have that permanent hand, or as we go through the process, we will share the status with the planning department just to keep you informed.
Okay, that's really all I have right now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fattal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one question from Mr. Cram. Sightline issues, do we have sightline issues there at the site?
We do not have sightline issues because the sightline and sightlines have been shown on the site plan. Originally, it was thought that when you're looking left to turn out of the site, that the cars in the neighboring car dealership would block the sightline. But by there, they took a photo, I took a photo. My photo was in a slightly different location because I simply pulled my car up to the stop line whereas would be normally to stop and see which way to go and how much sightline I have, and took the photo right from my car. They did the exact same thing, but they did it where Ashdo says, measure 14 and a half feet back from the edge of traveled way. Now, I agree, that's what Ashdo says, measure 14. It's actually 20 feet from the center line of the nearest travel lane. But if it's an 11 or 12 foot lane, that's roughly 14 and a half feet when you subtract out the half lane. But I've always been a proponent and argued, but I've always followed Ashdo's guidelines, that they're a little conservative on that distance of 14 and a half feet. I think it's about four feet shorter. Maybe in some of the older cars from the 1960s or 70s, when you're driving around 20 foot long boats, that's one thing. But nowadays, the cars are much shorter. The average car length is probably 17 feet, not 19 or 20 like it was back in. Because the Ashdo, believe it or not, even the Ashdo, their requirements for sight distances have not changed in like 30 or 40 years.
Okay.
I can add one thing to that. We've provided that line here. And this small little piece comes across here. And we've put a note on here that no obstructions to be put on our property at all that would would be within that sightline.
Okay. How many feet do we have, we're looking left? An idea? It was something about 80s, is that a figure, a number I've seen earlier?
300 feet. Greater than 300 feet, greater than 300 feet.
Okay, okay. With that, I'm all set, no sense, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Just a quick, because you said that nothing will go there. That front area isn't, that's not snow storage at all in the front, right?
Uh, no.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
No questions. Thank you.
All right, yeah, I think I'm I'm fine with this as well. You know, you've got some numbers you just need to submit, but.
Right, we have it.
Level of service, so I'm not overly concerned.
There's a few dot your i's, cross your t's type things, nothing major.
All right, with that, I'll open it up to the audience. Anyone in the audience with questions, comments, or concerns on this? Seeing none again, I'll bring it back to the board. Oh, I'm sorry, before I bring it back to the board, we have our list of conditions. You have no issue with any of these? It's the from 421.
A couple waivers too, Steve, right?
Yeah, well, they are asking for those, so I just want to make sure they're filed conditions.
That's the 421.
Correct.
Report from Alexandra Louder. And we don't have any issue with that.
Okay, and those are the two waivers you're asking for, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So the only thing I would say then, since we got, you know, if it's your wish for us to continue, I'm sorry, to end this and vote, then we're probably going to want to put just that we, you know, get a last sort of sign off on the the sweep analysis that's in, that that's satisfactory.
And the the most latest revised plan that he's showing right here. So the engineering division can see that one, yeah.
Yep, that'll be submitted. And the calculations discussed earlier will be submitted as requested. I don't think I'm missing anything. Anybody else, Ms. Louder, am I missing anything? All right, so we'll add those as well?
Yes.
Anyone has an issue with those?
Mr. Chu.
All right. Okay, so then with that, what is the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to close the public hearing.
All right, a motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right, we'll start with the waivers. The waivers requested by the applicant, section 6.1.12. C and section 6.2.10. H. Request that we, well, do we have a motion to grant these waivers as requested and as discussed during our hearing process?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the waivers as requested. Two waivers.
Okay, so we have a motion made, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, motion carries. As to the site plan review, do we have a motion?
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the site plan review and waivers at one Main Street.
All right, so we've got the conditions as listed with the additions of those discussed this evening, which included the sweep analysis, the revised plan, and the calculations to be submitted that was that were requested. So we have that motion.
In 1 through 4, correct?
Yep.
Second.
All right, motion made second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimous.
Good luck.
Another one down. Yeah. Moving along.
Yeah.
Moving on to agenda item F, 90 Chandler Street. This is a continuation from our 424 meeting, signed special permit. She was still with us. All right, once you guys are settled, just give me names for the record, the floor is yours.
Brian Scopil. And I am the player and coach development director for Tewksbury Youth Baseball.
Wayne Freitag, President, Tewksbury Youth Baseball.
John Peterson, I'm here on behalf of Metro signing on it.
Floor is yours, gentlemen.
All right, so we were here on the 24th to discuss this new sign that we had proposed. There was a question regarding the location of the sign. On the actual drawing that we had given you showing location four, that is the actual location of where we have proposed. The picture just does not line up with where that location goes. I had gone out and surveyed myself the area. The spot proposing does have electrical hook up here, right here. It's kind of right behind the dugout and the batters, the backstop there. I measured it about 13 feet from the roadway. There was an existing, it looks like, sign there or something, but it's no longer there. Believe that's the best, you know, sightline. I took some pictures to show, you know, coming from East Street from the cemetery towards the field. And then I had another picture coming from the other way.
Just quick, those those markers, that's where you're talking about the sign?
Correct, that's where it would go, yeah, right up there.
All right, so visually, the the other one is, makes it look like it's in a completely different.
Exactly, yes, correct, yeah, that was a mistake on the sign part. So hoping these pictures would show like a better.
Well, no, yeah, I think, we've all seen this, right? We know where this is showing now.
Absolutely, I was looking maybe.
Exactly. Where that current sign is, I think is what we have on there. So that makes a lot of sense, yeah.
All right, sorry, continue. If there's anything you guys would like to add about signage?
Yeah, I'd just like to add that, you know, our program, you know, relies a lot on communication. In 2022, we we lacked, you know, that that process. And we thought the best way to go directly to our, you know, you know, our players and parents is to be able to have some type of up to date message board that, you know, keeps them up to date on registrations. We're always lagging, you know, people are always coming in late on our registrations, and it causes a big, you know, issue for, you know, forgetting our season started on time. So this would help tremendously. We host a lot of tournaments. It would provide a lot of information on when those dates are. And, you know, and then we rely, you know, you know, on sponsorships as well. And, you know, that would be something that we would use that that board as for.
Well, I've kept you out of this one, so I guess we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I think we just answered this, but just to confirm, those two stakes are the legs of the new.
Yes, that's where that's where it would be going.
Oh, yeah, I drove by that on the way over here this afternoon. Looked like a good spot. There was, you know, baseball games going on right behind it. As far as the overall size of the sign relative to that older sign that's a few yards down the road, is it same size, larger, smaller?
Very similar, yeah.
Yeah, it may be a little taller, but I think it is not as wide as the old sign was. Say that.
And then in reference, there's a, it looks like a street sign or a concrete pad.
Yeah, there's a little pathway right there that cuts through there. Usually, people are using it as parking for the games now.
All right, so just to make sure that that's not like a road sign that's going to pop right back up in front of your.
Oh, the one that was, the cement that was there?
Yeah, the cement.
Oh, yeah, no, I don't know what they. Trying to figure that out.
It was previously, yeah.
We thought it was like 1734.
I'm sorry, I was thinking about the other sign down there.
Old sign that, yeah, we went down and we checked the state. It was a state that went down into the concrete and stuff, so, yeah, it would have been just old signage, so.
Okay, cool. And then you had mentioned one other thing about sponsors, sponsorships on the electronic message board? Or would that be on the banner part on top?
It is on the banner, the banner on top.
Okay, so the actual electronic sign itself wouldn't have sponsorships, would it?
I mean, we could get, I mean, I, you know, I don't know if it's in the purview of this committee. You know, would you have an objection to something like that?
Not necessarily.
We haven't really, oh, I'm sorry, but we haven't really had something like that come up, right? Because we've never done something that's with like one of the youth organizations or the, I mean, the closest thing would be the school, right?
As far as what is concerned, businesses advertising on there?
Like, you know, so if somebody's sponsoring the, you know, like, and I don't know, but just for example, they just have the Beauty and the Beast play.
Right.
If the Beauty and the Beast play had been brought to you by whoever, it would have gone up on the board, right?
I would think so, only because that would be considered an off-premise commercial sign, and that's a little different than what we're talking about here. So I don't have a complete answer to that right now, just because we haven't really encountered it.
I mean, for me, and we can all go around the room, but I guess what I would say is that this is one of those ones, maybe because we kind of haven't done it before, if we're okay with it, I'll put the contingency, I want to put the contingency on it that we can revisit it if we think that whatever's going up there isn't in keeping with what we thought with that.
The one thing I would just say the intent would be is to say thank you to our sponsors.
Right, which is probably the way we're envisioning it, but in case our wording ten years from now or twenty years from now, it's not us, because it won't be me. You know, it's, you know, it helps to make sure that there's that option if something, you know, comes up with a question, it's like, okay, now it's become, it's very rarely ever talking about Tuxbury Youth. It's now talking about, you know, one of the car dealerships down the road, because they bought space on the board. That is not okay, as far as I'm concerned. It's not to be used for advertising.
We're looking at.
It would be to thank sponsors who are doing things with you.
I'll give you some examples of what we would put on that board. Standings, registrations are open, stuff like.
Well, no, that's fine, I'm telling you, but we want to make sure it doesn't become a billboard
Yeah, absolutely.
of someone buying space to say, you know, come see us down the road for your new used car, or whatever it is.
No, that's not the intent, yeah.
All right, so we're all clear on that? We all feel okay with that?
Yeah.
All right, okay, I'm sorry.
So I believe that is all my questions.
All right, Mr. Chairman?
So I like the newer location better than the old location. So I would say that, again, I do feel that it's out of context with the area, but having been on the board for Tuxbury Soccer, I do understand exactly what you're talking about, because I was registrar, and, you know, I got more emails in the two days after registration closed than I did for the months beforehand.
Been doing it a long time, so I know.
So I do get that it's not just email and websites and all of that, that something like this, you know, in a highly trafficked area could be helpful. I do think that it's subtle in that, you know, and it sort of blends in with where you're at. I would also say, agree with the contingencies here that it should strictly be, the messaging should be strictly be associated with the operations of the baseball organization. It shouldn't be a rotation of your outfield signs or anything like that. And, you know, I guess me, myself, I would probably even say not thanking sponsors, but I, you know, but I probably wouldn't go that far if the rest of the board felt that that was appropriate. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Duffy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not really sure how much we can dictate, you know, what sign board applicants put on their signs. They think we'll kind of run up against this a little bit. I think we have to kind of trust the judgment of the folks that are doing it. And I, and, you know, as far as trying to give your sponsors an attaboy, I mean, I would be, I would be okay with that. I think that that's a good way to, you know, to get their name out there a little bit and get them back next year. Sponsor in the team and helping out as much as they can, and I know they do on a regular basis in this town, so.
Absolutely.
So anyways, back to more Monday things. So I see the two wooden posts in the ground there. So you'll be looking at it coming both directions on East Street, which I think is a good thing. I think the size is appropriate. But then just looking at, what is that little metal pipe sticking out?
That's what we were trying, like I said, that's an old signage, maybe. We're not too sure what was there.
Yeah. I want to say that there was. Maybe you could get a couple of dents and some shovels over there and get rid of that thing.
Whatever it was, it's a pretty big piece of concrete that they put.
Put it in. It's an old flagpole?
I think he was right, I think it was an old street sign, but it wasn't a street. It just said like a memory of or like a.
Mike Ransohn would definitely get stitches on that. He would find that and he would get stitches on that.
Yeah, yeah, that is something. We can definitely get that removed down to the concrete. Correct.
While you're in the process. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, and I'm okay with the.
Sawzall with that thing's name on it.
That's it, that's all it takes. I got one.
Mr. Fratelli?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm the guy responsible for bringing you guys back in, because I didn't think the sign location being on top of the hill was appropriate, so I'm glad you moved it down where it is. So one of my concerns is it's, so John, it's seven feet from the ground, the base of the sign, is that accurate?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Do you think it's enough? So my concern is, like you guys know, kids coming out of the back of the dugout, jumping up, trying to bang the sign, to do something to do, hoping they don't, hoping they don't climb the sign? You know they're going to, you know they're going to try to.
It's up on, it's kind of up on the raised hill a little bit too, so I think it will stand taller than the seven feet that, you know, it says. Yeah.
I just, I don't want you guys to put it in and say, geez, we should have put it higher so we can prevent kids from going up there and trying to climb it, get on the sign, but.
That hill is pretty much a border where parents don't like their kids to even go past, because the street is right there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like I said, thirteen.
So they real, I've never, personally, I've never seen kids even up on that hill. They stay down at the bottom.
They actually stay around the corner, you know, and then down the bottom. But, yeah, I get that with the seven feet, like you said.
Well, I'm just thinking.
Not allowing them to climb off the sign as well, so.
You tell them all you want, they coached down there for six years. You tell them, you tell them, you tell them, you tell them, and they never listen, and they're out there hanging around.
Correct.
Thank God, they're kind of swinging bats, nodding, nodding around everybody anymore. You get that under control. My grandson's down there playing now with my granddaughter, but, you know, I'm all in favor of the sign. I mean, so would you be opposed to, you know, using it as a public announcements for the town as well? In the event something happens, I.
We're open, we're definitely.
It's town property, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The towns were great to us.
I thought we did.
Yeah, no. I mean, I can see people in the town driving by that street all the time and seeing public announcements there.
Yep.
You can only put up so much baseball stuff, you know that, you know, standings and all that stuff, but public announcements, parades coming up, Memorial Day is coming up, or something like that, you know, or.
So that's, that's an error that I didn't know, didn't realize. I thought every one of these, when we did them, that we had them commit to emergency messaging or something like that in the event the town needed it. Not necessarily, you know, it's town day, that's not quite, but at least the emergencies. Is that not accurate?
No, that's not standard provision.
All right. I don't know if it's just a sidebar convo. Does anybody have a problem with us making that a condition from now on, always on these?
No. I don't, in the past, when we asked, when Wamisack came with their sign, we asked them preface to.
I think they're the last one that did it.
That, you know, public announcements, and they said absolutely sure.
My fault for not noticing it, but I think it's.
I would like that.
To at least have, you know, the commitment that, you know, emergency, I mean, you know, maybe the town announcements are a little wiggle room, but I mean, if, you know, something's important and it needs to go up there, I think they should be on any of the signs that can be changed like that, which they all can be, so.
As a board, I'm sure we're very open to that.
All right, so good.
And the other thing is, I mean, I know there's always a rift between Tuxbury softball and Tuxbury baseball. I've been in town a long time and did a lot of coaching and so forth, but I would hope that you guys will be up to allow, like hockey, to put up a posting there at some point during their season and football as well. I mean, we all live here, we all have kids in all these programs, and you guys as well.
We read part about building to hockey and basketball as well in there. We open up boardroom to all of them, so, yes.
That's awesome.
I try to open them up. I've been around for a long time, so. In the town.
I was around with the Frankie Flanagan era and Mr. Daley area and all those guys, but it was a great program then, it's a great program now, and thanks for what you do, guys.
Thank you very much.
All set, Mr. Chairman?
All right, nothing to add. So, you know, obviously, we all kind of misunderstood where the sign was, the clarification for where it actually meant to be. It makes the problem that we all had go away, so that was the only thing that I needed you to come back for, so. With that, I'll open up to the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns? Ones, twice, seeing none, bring it back to the board. What is the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to close the public hearing.
All right, we have a motion made, motion made, second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. As to the signed special permit?
I'm making a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the signed special permit at ninety Chandler Street with the condition that we allow public service announcements and so forth and so on.
So we have a handful of conditions and waivers as a part of this, yeah, from the previous packet.
Oh, okay, that's right.
Oh, I don't have it in front of me then. Could you pass it over or just read them out?
Sure. So the waivers to be considered are from section six point two seven C four B, which prescribes that the business public entrance must be at least one hundred and twenty-five feet from the street. So since it's not really a business with a proper public entrance, I think that just to make sure that everything's complete, that would be one to consider. Section six two seven C four H prescribes that the electronic message board sign may only be amber color, amber color lettering with a black background, and the applicant has indicated they would like full color, so that would be another waiver. And the third waiver is section six two ten D one, which prescribes that any freestanding sign may not be located within fifteen feet of any street, and as Mr. Peterson noted, that it is thirteen feet from the street, so we're coming into that setback a little bit. So those are the three waivers. And the three conditions would be prescribing that no sign shall be illuminated between the hours of midnight and six AM unless the business is operational. I hope you're not. And prescribing that no sign permit shall be issued without a concurrent electrical permit. Sign is, excuse me, electric, electric permit. And then the other ones noted during the public hearing, other messages for community on the sign for other sports and public safety announcements. Maintain the sign in working order, work in color display in perpetuity. And adding now, the business messaging and advertising is not allowed exclusively. It may be, it may not be used as an off-premise sign for businesses, so it has to be related to the baseball activities.
All right, so we'll do the waivers first. We have a motion on the waivers.
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
Motion made, second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it takes care of the waivers. And then on the app, I mean, on the permit itself, with the conditions as read by Ms. Louder, we had a motion, and we had a second, so we'll do the voting. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, so that takes care of both.
Great.
All right.
Congrats. Good luck, guys.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
All right, that brings us.
Hey, John, give me a break till we hear on the price.
I'm going to try. Thank you very much.
See you, thank you.
All right. That brings us to correspondence. We did not have any correspondence. Any other business not known at the time of posting this agenda? That's new. I like that.
It is, so I wanted to bring that to your attention, and I apologize, we didn't have a chance to discuss it before now. There was an open meeting law seminar put on by KP Law, which they specialize in municipal law, and they noted that there are some open meeting law issues with just saying old business or new business, and putting it in this language gives us a little bit more leeway in what we discussed during that time.
Because it's something other than old and new?
I guess.
Okay. So we are going to go with other business not known at the time of the posting this agenda?
You got it.
All right, so thank God we've come up with more words to say the same thing.
So I'll have a couple of comments. I had emailed Ms. Louder today about the ASBILs and the issue we had as a board having to approve those Salem Road, or Border Road, whatever it was, and Grammy's Way under a quick type of a situation. And I mentioned to her that there's a couple outstanding projects in town. One being the MDR project on a main street, the old police station, and the other one on Terramore that are big projects that are going to be coming up at some point in the near future. You know, making it, making her aware that, listen, let's be proactive rather than reactive and get the ASBILs, all right, moving. And that's going to mean the engineering department and everybody else involved and the building department and the developers as well to get their acting gear and get going, because they wanted to get it done. Terramore is already occupied with a number of homes down there, I think. And then MDR is going to be coming up, I think, on Main Street relatively soon. They're moving along pretty quick, so.
Well, these are the last, not the last, but I mean, these are, these ones predate our new change too. So these are ones we'd end up chasing otherwise.
Correct, and I had noted to Mr. Fratelli, and I can completely appreciate his concern, as I'm sure it's shared by the rest of the board members, the Terramore subdivision ASBIL is actually already under review, so they actually are being quite proactive with that one particularly, because that's going to be related to a street acceptance. The rest of the project, please.
Can we let them know what we just went through and I commented on and saying? Just so there's no question, let's remind them of what I told them at that hearing and any of you else who is in that same boat. New rules, new process. Don't want them in here at the last minute, begging for things.
Absolutely. And as just an addition, I have it on my list to start reaching out to a lot of those projects that a lot of them are just really waiting to get their final electrical hookups. I know that's been a little bit slow for National Grid lately, so just reaching out to those projects sooner than later to make sure that it's on their mind.
Okay. Anything else falling under this new category that would also include old and new business?
Anything new on lighting at Treehouse? For parking lot?
I have not heard anything yet, no.
Okay, I haven't been down there since.
I have one item, and I hate to keep bringing it up, but, you know, when we talked at several meetings ago to the developer from Pleasant Street who cut down the tree, they, we had asked, or I had asked for a cut sheet, basically documenting what they had told us at the meeting, because there was no documentation with their presentation. And I'm a little, a little miffed that that just keeps getting ignored. And, you know, we really have nothing from them other than the fact that we, the things we know that they cut down the tree. So I would like to follow up with that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Duffy, I have an issue with that as far as, I mean, Mr. Plunkett was here tonight. He's always in front of us. Mrs. Sullivan's a member in town as well, well-established businessman. I don't think they're going to be running out of town and not giving us cut sheets or not doing the tree like they proposed and they're going to. They're always in front of us at some point. Mr. Plunkett's been on the board for twenty years, and I don't think he's going to be running out of town. So, I mean, I know you keep mentioning it too about the fact that we haven't got that paperwork, but I think they're in town, I don't think they're going to go anywhere, and I just hate to belate the point, and, you know, I think when it gets done, even if it doesn't get done, we'll be on the occasion of getting it done, because that's part of the, part of the plan, you know, so, I mean, I mean, I don't know. I just, I know Mr. Sullivan has been in town for years, and so has Mr. Plunkett, but I think you'll do the right thing.
Yeah, and I think you're probably right about that.
Yeah.